Rick, anything else?
You know, I actually did want to talk about a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to let you know that I have been looking through the materials that the Grand Ron tribe, Confederated tribes left. Very interesting stuff. And it actually is inspiring me to maybe look online and try and find that educational piece that they were talking about. That looks really interesting. And so I just want to let you know that I have been spending a little bit of time on that just to explore more completely some of the ideas that they were throwing around during that meeting.
Really well done, isn't it?
It really is. It, I was, I learned a lot during that session. I had no idea about the number of tribes that were represented by that and the breadth of their-
Geographically?
Yeah, geographically, their responsibility. I mean, from Northern California to Southwestern Washington, so. Anyway, I thought I'd let you know that I've kind of on my own, independently been looking into that. It's been very enjoyable, actually. And then the second thing I wanted to kind of remind you about, I've spoken with you before about this, but we're getting closer, and that is, as you know, the council's office has been working on a revamp of the public contracting rules, the local public contracting rules for the county. So we're getting close to getting that done. I thought I'd let you know that we have been meeting with stakeholders basically with respect to that and talking about issues. And I think, I think the rules are in pretty good shape now. And I think I should also add that there were no big deficiencies with any of the current county rules, but there are a lot of gaps which are, unless they're adopted by the county, they're actually, state law kind of kicks in with respect to how those processes work. So what I did was go through and make certain that the rules are compliant and also, as I say, filled in a lot of the gaps. So it's, it's going to look really bad in, in terms of the volume of changes that are going to be proposed, but it's really not a significant change in how the county has been conducting its business over the years. And as I say, I would like to reemphasize that it has been, you know, consistent with state law. It's just that there are a lot of areas that weren't addressed in the current rules. So that said, I ended up with a fairly bulky product, as it were, and so the stakeholders, and Harvey's been part of that group as well, we've been kind of working on a process of rolling it out to the employees so that it, it doesn't seem overwhelming and too daunting. So, so that's actually what we've been spending our time on lately to make certain that the employees don't throw their hands up in the air and say, "Oh, my gosh, what's happening?" So I thought I'd let you know that in, in the next, you know, couple of months, we'll probably be rolling that out. I, I can also report that there have been a couple of changes to the public contracting rules from the last legislative session that are going to go into effect in January. So I think we'll probably time it so that we can have it effective about the same time so we don't have kind of two sets of rules in those particular areas. That said, there's also some of the rules that have been changed that don't go into effect until, and this is actually from the statute itself, until the Attorney General's office has adopted some statewide rules related to that. And that has to do with actually a concept that we used on the new HHS facility. It has to do with construction manager, your general contractor sort of mode that we took with that. So bottom line, as I want to let you know, I haven't forgotten about that. It's very much on the radar. Our staff is continuing to work on the issue, but as I say, we're trying to, to get a product together for training and rollout that will, I guess, not shock the conscience, if you will, of some of the employees who will be looking at a much expanded set of rules for the county. So my plan would be, kind of once we're ready to roll out and get going, is to do a work session with you so you can better understand where the changes were made, the types of things that I added, get you comfortable with them, obviously take input from you about some of the policy decisions that are inevitably within those rules. It isn't just state law. The county does have discretion in many areas. And then we'll roll those out and get them ready to go. So, questions at all about that?
I did have a question. Do you guess roughly how many of our employees will be affected by this change? How many of them will deal with that contracting? Thirty, fifty? Maybe?
Do you mind if I defer to Harvey? He might have a better idea than I do.
Yeah, I'd say it's probably in the vicinity of about fifty. Yeah. Basically, you've got somebody in each of the departments, at least one person in each of the departments who interacts regularly with our office relating to contracts, and then you have a couple other folks in some of the bigger departments that do that as well.
Sure, I suppose every department deals with contracting.
Sure. And purchasing.
Yeah.
It doesn't cover just the purchasing, I mean, just the contracts. It also covers purchasing, the limits, what you have to do if it's under $5,000, if it's between $5,000 and $150,000, so on, so forth.
And this is actually, you'll adopt the LCRBs as the Board of Commissioners, but they're implemented by the Local Contracting Board, which is you as well, but as the local Contracting Board.
Right.
And where he said, I just want to make sure you understand this for anyone who's here, where he said there's gaps. Essentially, what our LCRBs say is, if our LCRBs don't address it, we comply with state law.
Right.
So there, there really aren't gaps.
Right.
We're just moving essentially what state law covered into the-
And, and so one of, one of the things we wanted to do was make them more comprehensive so that people wouldn't have to figure out where in state statute these relevant rules are. So, as I said, it's going to appear daunting and look like there are tons of changes, but the changes frankly are quite minimal. And all I did really was bring state statute and in some cases where we had some discretion, some new policies in, but as I say, that's what we'll identify in the board work session.
Okay. All right.
And he mentions it was daunting because it went from about thirty pages to about a hundred and four pages?
Well, it, it's only 104 because it's, it's actually more like, it's about double, is what it is.
It shows all the changes.
Yeah, and it's marked.
Typical legalese or, I mean, your profession takes a lot of hits, but some of them are justifiable.
Frankly, it, it is kind of legalese because where, where the statute mandates what we do, I put the statutory language in so that if, if I put it in in a different way, somebody might interpret it differently. So a lot of it is simply quoting state statute.
And it helps you, you know, because you get people calling saying, "You're not following the rules," all the time. So what it does is it doesn't require someone to go from our LCRBs out to state law and figure it out themselves. It's right there.
And the other thing I'd say is, and I think the group agreed on this, what we'll have now is a much more defensible set of rules because the gaps are filled in. As Danny says, they're not gaps in the real sense because state law is applying, but we're bringing that in. And it certainly clarifies a lot of things in terms of what county policy is with respect to that, most of which is mandated by state law. So I just wanted to give you a heads up and let you know that I haven't forgotten about it. We are going to get you a product, but part of the process has been making certain that we have, well, in addition to the rollout program, we also identified some changes that were necessary in county administrative policies to reflect the, the changes in the new rules as well. So we're trying to get those policy rule changes in hand as well.
Okay. We'll be proceeding on.
Pins and needles, sir. Just can't believe it.
Anything else, Rick?
That's all I have a little bit of questions, I mean.
Anything else, John, you have? Questions? All right. Number two is input from county administrator. What's happening here? This is-
Okay. It's kind of a short agenda. Community service work. I work for Ron Parker, who's the president of Kiwanis Public Action. The other consent calendar. We have that order, I don't know if you were here last week, when, for the Boy Scouts?
Okay.
You know that, too. There's no public hearings. Under discussion deliberation, this is authorizing us to accept a grant or, this is called the Bureau of Justice Fiscal Year 13, Harold Rogers Prescription Drug Monitoring Program. Essentially, this is mostly led by Dr. James. You've heard him talk multiple times about the opiate issues in our county. So we, we applied for a grant that essentially utilizes the state's prescription drug monitoring program. It, it will do a lot of things. I'll kind of read off the list here because there's a lot of it. It creates a dashboard for physician prescribers. In other words, a cross comparison between physicians to see if there's some kind of, you know, abuse between clients, between physicians for prescriptions. Public health education regarding hazards of prescribed narcotics, prescriber postmortem for all deaths in which a prescribed substance contributed to the cause of death. It will orient justice officials to clinical evidence-based and practice, best practice managed for treatment of opiate addiction. So community justice will be involved with this as well. And all the addiction treatment providers will be involved with it, well, the ones that serve that population. So mostly the ARC and ONTRAC. It will develop countywide protocols for the use of methadone and other alternatives to opiate dependency reduction. There'll be an annual action-oriented and practice improvement summit, so there'll be essentially an annual training for all the people that are involved. They will also provide training for law enforcement officers and meet other related justice officials, so VAs, prosecutors, public defenders, for evidence-based crisis intervention. If you want, if you want me to go on. Essentially, this is, yeah, I mean, it's a lot. The main way this is facilitated is through what's called interdisciplinary action group. So it has representatives from Health and Human Services, likely Dr. James, although it's not required by the grant. District Attorney, Community Justice, Sheriff, Circuit Court, the Opiate Prescriber Group. Jefferson Regional Health Alliance is participating, and essentially it's a two-year grant to see what impact we can have on reduction in opiate-related crime and deaths and this kinds of things. It'll go from October 1st of 2013 through March 31st of 2015, so $393,575.
Dr. Jim James has been absolutely at the forefront of this and, you know, in, in my latest on, just being around and listening to what, what's going on, I mean, his passion for it, but one of the things that strikes me is the, has been the respect that he has with his peers. And I've been told by others that it wasn't him pushing this to pull doctors and dentists, all those prescribers in, it probably never gotten off the ground, but I can have the respect that folks have for him. And his peers, by his peers, which is pretty incredible to get something like this going because I think prescription drug abuse now is, what, the number two or third cause of death of, something like that. It's high anyway, and even those that don't die of the addiction, right, just with OxyContin and all that other stuff, so. Pretty cool. Good for him. Okay? Any questions?
Danny, one question. Given the potential for some increasing drug and alcohol treatment in jail, is there any likelihood that the jail would benefit from this program?
Yeah, the sheriff's concrete.
And a dollar.
Oh, no, no. That program from the jail is being funded from a different fund, I'm sure, 3194. But I mean, it will serve people who have addictions and it will include people with opiate addictions who have been sentenced to serve a period of nine in jail. The next one is a change order, and really this is just coming to you because the original contract was under $30,000. This moves it slightly over $30,000, so I have to read to you, but when we did the jail remodel over there, we had to break out some concrete and replace it. We have a little bit more we need to replace. The original contract was for $29,150. This change order is for $5,138, which brings the total to $34,338. So-
So is that, is that what's going over there in singular clause or no? What's, what's all that breaking broke out? Is that what it, that is?
Sorry if I can jump in. So what happened is there's some trees over there. You remember the escapee jumped over and, yeah, that tree went away, but there was some tree root damage over there and basically just lifted up the, the concrete. And so it was part of our, wasn't necessarily part of the jail remodel, that kind of stuff, but we had to fix the, the root damage over there. So they took all that concrete out, eliminated the trees, put it back down, and then there was one piece of concrete you see over here right in front of the, the justice building.
Okay. I was wondering. Well, that was a question I had. Normally this would have been under, was it Adroit that did the main contract?
No, Brian.
Maybe, yeah. So maybe we had a separate contract with him.
Right. This wasn't associated with that other project.
Yeah, I see.
Okay. General man. All right. We're going to, again, we're going to hold off on the, on the second sub-under damage report on library survey. We'll go to number three. Well, I want to hold off on that, too, because this is something that Commissioner Breidenfeld wanted to talk about, private salvage and SBA tender sales. Number four is road closure continuation. John?
Sure, I'll talk about that. I wish I was here for that, too, but, but that's okay. This has to do with the Pylon Thompson Project. You know, originally they requested some road closures up there. We said, "Fine." They received some more funds for, to do another .8 tenths of a mile road closures. We sent off, now the ONC Counties is our, has the MOU with the BLN with us on road closures. So we told Rocky we'd rather not spend any more money on closing those roads. We'd like to leave them alone and use that money for timber sale management or something. So John Grinsler got back ahold of us and, and he was concerned about our approach. And I didn't want to burn up a bunch of the county's ink, so I only printed one copy of these, you know. And so these are those roads that they want to discontinue. And one of them is basically a skid trail, but I've reached a point in my life where I see we're just putting more and more restrictions on the public. The public is now, or humans are now considered pox on the land and we should try to keep them off. If there was elk going down through there, nobody would care, but because we have humans going through here, it's, it's a concern. And so it's a concern of mine that we just keep locking things up and excluding the public. Now, you could say that, you know, that this causes sediment in a stream, you know, and this is going to cause erosion, but we're here on the earth. Humans are here. And so what I would like to see is us oppose any future road closures. And what it would be is we would take a position that we would pass on to ONC Counties, that they would pass on to the BLN, saying, "We oppose these road closures." Now, that's just my opinion on this. Like I say, I envision a time when you're going to drive up to Union Creek and there'll be a gate on every road between View Falls and Union Creek there, or our prospective Union Creek, shutting off all those roads. And, and this isn't John Grinsler, Dave Baron's fault. This is direction they're giving from above, you know, to lessen the impact of humans on the environment. My opinion.
Good morning. Welcome back. Just in time. Very tight schedule, isn't it? So, have you got input on, on the road closure then? Doug?
You know, I'm not going to change my position.
And your position, yeah, okay. All right. All right. All right. Two to one vote, so that's all you need.
Okay. So we will instruct ONC in the future that we're opposed to road closure?
Yep. Jordan? Okay, let's, let's bounce back then to, to library survey discussion.
I think they're just here to listen in.
Pardon me?
They're just here to-
Oh, they're not here? Oh, okay.
I actually was going to have Harvey kind of lead this discussion and we're going to call, but I wanted Harvey to give you some background before we get on the phone.
Sure.
If that's okay.
Okay. Sure. Harvey, you're on.
Well, let me just refresh your memory about what, what's happened here. First of all, the, the general fund support for the libraries is just over $5 million and that excludes the video poker portion of it, which is $622,000 that we transfer in, in addition to the regular general fund support. So we're coming to this point where we thought we, we were going to be many years ago. We've been using our reserves or any day funds to basically bolster libraries and get to this point. So we're getting to the point now where those reserves are coming down and we need to find some alternative or we face closing libraries. The Board of Commissioners have a few questions, as did the library community, about which way we should go. Part of what the Budget Committee did was set aside some money inside the general fund contingency, made a portion of that money available for us to do a couple of projects. One of those was a survey. In that survey, we had some questions that we wanted to answer. Specifically, what kind of district should, if there was a district, should we do a special district or should we do a service district? The difference between those is a special district, of course, has a separate governing body. A service district would be governed by the Board of Commissioners. We did hear some concerns in the community that, you know, they basically felt like maybe it should be a, a special district rather than a service district, get that money separated completely from the county. So you had that question. Now, that's one of the things that the survey addressed. The other was, should we do a countywide district or, you know, should we do something that was individual for each of the libraries? We asked, we had that question for several reasons. The biggest reason is basically we've gone out there and we've tried to do a levy before, countywide, and it failed miserably. So is, was the issue really that or was it tied to, to a service district or a special district issue? So we wanted to be able to clarify that. And the other thing is, is we heard that there was much more support for the hometown library than there was for the countywide system as, as a whole. So we wanted to test that theory. Another question that we've had is, did the, you know, we've heard from time to time that the county built, built way too many libraries. So was that something that was impeding the progress? You know, would they feel like, would the citizens feel like a countywide district should still be formed or would they be more inclined to support a special district just basically inside their city limits? So that was another thing that we wanted to test. Another thing was the permanent rate or temporary fix. So did we want to create a special district, service district with a permanent rate limit or did we just feel like this is something that they wanted to go out with a temporary levy, three to five year operating levy? And then finally, we wanted to get that information by precinct so we could identify where those levels of support were and for which different concept. So with that in mind, we reached out to DHM Research. They've done, they did one previous survey for us specifically on this topic, this type of topic, and they have expertise in doing this nationally known, so on, so forth. And so they entered into that agreement with us to do this. Here's a copy of the survey. I didn't see that you had. Does everybody have?
How did you tell when you got back to the chart?
Like a chart.
Really?
Oh, I couldn't.
And with, with that, what we could do is probably just call James Kendall.
So before, before we call him, I asked Harvey to give you a reminder of the background. Is there anything else you guys want to be updated on before we start getting some of the data from him?
Well, I think we've had a chance to take a look at this, so I think that's a result of trying to be good here for him as well.
So I've asked, I've asked him to visit with us for a little bit and just explain to him, or explain to us, have him explain to us where the data says that we probably ought to go.
And M is again, so James Kendall?
Mr. Kendall.
All right. Is James available?
Sure. One second, man.
Yeah, this is Danny Jordan from Jackson County.
Okay, one second.
Thank you. Hi, James. This is Danny Jordan from Jackson County here with our Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Breidenfeld, Sheriff Scundrick, and Commissioner Rasher.
Hello.
Harvey Bragg's here as well, and so is our county council and recorder, and we have several members in our audience. We're calling essentially to give our board a brief review of where we're at to get to the point of interpreting the survey. So we're hoping maybe you can give us some information about the results of the survey and make some recommendations to us about what directions they may want to consider going.
Sure, absolutely. So what I'll do, I think I probably have the copy of the report in front of them. So I'll give you some, a quick background on the methodology here to get started, make sure we're all on the same page as far as the sampling goes unless that's already been done. And then we'll walk through this. I might go quickly through some parts that I feel are a little less important, so feel free to interrupt me if any questions come up or if you need clarification on anything I'm talking about.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. So we interviewed 500 likely voters in the county. While doing this, we set some likely voters, I mean, residents who have voted in at least two of the last four elections. And we set quotas for age and gender and party to make sure we had a representative sample of likely voters in the county. Twenty-six percent of the sample, or surveys were conducted by cell phone. And in that sample, 58% use a library at least a few times a year, so a few times a year or more often, and 27% do not use the library. So pretty good mix of library usage in the sample as well. The goal of the survey was really to measure voter support for library funding and support for creating one or more library districts in the county. So if there are no questions about the methodology or the sample, we'll go ahead and jump right in and start reviewing the key findings.
Okay, James, this is Commissioner Scundrick. I have one quick question. On the 500, I know you've done it with the workforce and I probably have asked this question before, but representative out of the, out of the total voters of Jackson County, which is, what's our number now? What's our registered voters?
115.
I would've said a little higher, but yeah, somewhere around there.
Okay. Anyway, the 500, where I was going with this is, so the 500, and I think I read that somewhere about the, how that's, could be off of, that's amount of percent, but you feel real confident on 500 responses, given us a real good, I know, I just heard what you said about trying to be as representative as possible. I'm just curious. I'm not a polling expert.
Sure. No, 500 is a good sample. Many communities, we go with 400. With 500, you have a margin of error with about 4.4% on your results. So if we were to survey the exact same population again, so the same proportion of ages and genders and parties, you could expect your results to maybe shift forward 4%, 4.5%. That's, that's a margin error we're dealing with. So that's a very good number for polling sample size.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and jump right into the results, and I'll, I'll move through this first part fairly quickly. The likely voters in the county, they're satisfied with their quality of life in Jackson County. 79% are satisfied either very or somewhat with their quality of life. And 76% have a favorable impression of their local libraries in the county as well. We asked the same question in 2011. Do you have a favorable impression of your local libraries in the county? And they could rate it favorable, somewhat favorable, not too favorable, or not at all favorable. In 2011, the numbers were comparable when you're looking at very and somewhat favorable combined, but what's interesting, when we look at the extreme end of the scale here, are the very favorable impressions, that increased 12 points from a figure seen in 2011. So overall favorable impressions, about the same as 2011, but those on the extreme, the very favorables, have seen a, a decent increase in the last few years. And residents, match lanes, are more likely than other areas of the state to have an overall favorable impression of their local libraries. Reasons that people gave, we asked open-ended, why do you have a favorable impression? It includes the, the selection of books and materials. Voters recognize the importance of libraries in the county, and the, the staff also came up, so they're happy with the staff of their local libraries, as well as reasons why they're, they have a favorable impression. I don't put too much weight on the unfavorable impressions because we only had a sample size of 81 that had an unfavorable impression, but some of the reasons that were brought up were, we built too many libraries, we're wasting money, they have limited hours, or they're just obsolete now with the widespread access to internet in the county. But again, these are very few people mentioning these types of answers because of the sample size, so take that for what it is. Okay, so moving on, we read a brief background on how Jackson County currently funds its libraries. And we asked if they support creating a library district. So out of the box, we see 53% do support creating a library district in the county. So you do have a majority supporter, about half of the likely voters support creating a district. Just upfront in the survey, not a whole lot more information about a quick reveal of current funding options.
I have a question on that, sir. Again, this is Commissioner Skunderk. On the 16% that don't know, just on a, I don't know if it's intuitive or what, again, from a pollster. Where would that, where would that group fall? I mean, you know, given, say, whatever the poll is on that, it is, is that, is that, do you find people that say, gee, I just don't know, do you find them being more negative or more positive, generally speaking?
You know, that's not a surprising number. That's a number that we would expect, especially dealing with more complicated issue like library funding. So it's tough to say where these people ultimately fall as far as support. These are people who are either more calculated in their thinking, I don't know enough about this issue yet to really give my opinion, or those who just really didn't understand the whole explanation that we were trying to give about how libraries are funded, or just don't have an opinion about how to, whether they move forward with the district. So it's hard to say whether they support or oppose, but it's not an unexpected number and not a number that we're surprised by.
Okay, because of, oh, that's right. Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, so following that, we asked support for two different rates, districts with different tax rates. One of them was 20 cents, but it would close all libraries but the Medford library. And the other one was at 60 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. And that would keep all libraries open and actually add hours and services to these libraries. So these were asked separately, they were rotated. Some people received 60 cents first, some people received 20 cents first. And you see the overwhelming support here is for the 60 cents per $1,000 assessed value, much more so than the 20 cent district. And we'll see through other evidence in the survey part of this, is the fact that there's, there's support for keeping all community libraries open. You know, a lot of people don't want to be in a district that's funding a library that they can't use or that they can't get to. So there's, there's much higher support for the 60 cent district. These are good numbers, and when we're looking at ballot issues, you like to see 60% support at least a third strongly supporting the issue. So that's a positive sign that that's where, where your likely voters are at on the 60 cents per $1,000 of assessed value district. And again, you see Ashland is more likely than other areas in the county to support the 60 cent district. Okay.
Okay.
Moving on, so we gave two statements, and we asked which they would prefer more. So a library district governed by county commissioners or a library district governed by independently elected boards? You see here again that there's, there's much more support for an independently elected board than being governed by the current county commissioners. It's really hard to say why that is. There's a general mistrust for government among most citizens in the state right now. And my guess is that a new independently elected board, that's kind of a blank slate, and that's where, where voters prefer starting. It's an unknown right now. They don't know who these people are, so that's the way that they lean at this point. It's probably not going to be a motivating reason whether someone would support or oppose the district in general. Okay, again, two statements, and we asked their preference for these statements. So support for the type of governance, so single library district or multiple community library district? And again, you see a single library district edging out community library districts by a pretty good margin. And again, this is more, or more supporting evidence that there's support for access for the whole county as far as libraries go. We don't want each, each community to, some communities to have support, some not to. We encourage countywide support for all of our libraries. Throughout most of these, support opposed, I should have mentioned this, you'll see that your likely, likely candidates come up, Democrats are more than, more or less, more likely to support most of these measures. And your younger voters are also big supporters, and Ashland is a big supporting base as well in the county. Okay, so moving on, we, we gave some background on local taxes that have been enacted to fund libraries. These are temporary taxes. And we asked support or opposition for a variety of ranges, so 20, 20 cents up through 50 cents. So again, half of these voters were red, starting with 50 cents and moving down the scale. The other half were red, starting with 20 cents and moving up the scale. And at 20 and 30 cents, you see right around 50% support. And as you would expect, as the amount increases, the support will decrease and the opposition will increase. A couple of reasons why this is different than the support we saw earlier for the 60 cent district. We're not talking about a district here, we're talking about something that's temporary. So this is a temporary tax. Some voters may realize that and realize that, hey, we're going to have to keep going out to the ballot year after year after year to extend this tax. And Ashland is also not included in this sample. So we didn't ask Ashland about this, if they already have a local tax. So your stronger supporters are moved from this sample, and this is a temporary tax where before we were talking about creating a library district. So that might help explain why you don't see as high a support when we ask the question this way.
Yeah, I have a quick question for you. This is Commissioner Brydenfall. You just mentioned in this chart number six, support temporary raise in local taxes, that Ashland is not included in those statistics. If you were to take those, that same, remove that same voting base out of chart five, four, and three, would it have similar circumstances?
Well, one second, I want to see, you know, it's not going to move those numbers that much. You know, Ashland did not represent a very significant portion of our sample. We concluded 65 of 500 interviews in Ashland. So, you know, it's maybe a bit of a stretch to say that's why the numbers in chart six are much lower. It probably has more to do with this being a temporary tax and not a district, but it might move it a little bit. But I wouldn't expect the other charts to move more than maybe three or four percentage points if that.
Oh, thank you.
And I can certainly run those numbers and send the results to Harvey if that's something you're interested in seeing.
No, not necessarily. I just wanted to try and get your take on that.
Okay, and again, your Democratic, your Democrats and your younger residents are more likely than, than Republicans and older residents to support any of those temporary tax levels. Again, we presented two statements and asked which one came closer to the voter's opinion. So it's critical that Jackson County find a new source of dedicated funding for the library system, and I'm willing to pay taxes to support that. And I'm not willing to support any new funding, even if it means completely eliminating library services. So you see again, this is a positive sign that almost 50% strongly, their opinion strongly aligns that it's critical libraries are important, and they're willing to pay more taxes to support it versus the only 26% who either strongly or somewhat align with that they wouldn't mind letting all library services go, they don't agree with funding it at all. So it's just another positive sign that libraries are valued in the county as a whole, and people are willing to support it. And Ashland, again, it's 84% of Ashland residents were strongly or somewhat aligned with funding libraries and paying more taxes to do so. Okay, and then finally, we, we got to a point in the survey where we said, well, you know what, if, if Jackson County has to make cuts, how much would you support making cuts in these areas? These were rotated. And they're all pretty comparable except for stop updating technology and buying new books and other materials. So there's much less support than for that, and there is for any of these other ways to reduce or cut services shows. So that's really the only clear takeaway we can have from this question is that that is the one that they do not want the cuts to be made, is in technology and materials. So that was the survey overall. So overall, there is support for a district. It appears there's support for a district. So we have 50% who support a district, and when we present the two districts and the consequences of 20 cents versus 60 cents, you see a very good amount of support for the 60 cent district.
James, this is Commissioner Rasher. I have a question.
Sure.
On page 16, I was just a little confused about this. The top chart on page 16 shows about a 78% dissatisfaction with quality of life in Jackson County. That doesn't align with, with what is back on page five and back on, I believe, with page two or so.
That's a great catch, and it looks like that scale is backwards. It is the opposite, and we have 78% who are satisfied, so I apologize for that. I'll get updated material though.
All right, that makes sense.
Yeah. Certainly not 78% who are satisfied. That would be, that would be a very odd sounding number for that type of question.
I don't see that many people frowning, so I.
Other questions? Can I give that back?
Commissioners? Any other, any other questions to James? Oh, we have him on the phone.
I know, I had some other questions, but he has answered those in his presentation.
Okay, 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 let's look at them. Well, thank you. We appreciate that, and some of the numbers were surprising, so.
Did I ask which numbers jumped out at you? What was surprising?
Well, I was surprising at the 60 cents. The majority, slim as it is, but would, would, would support a countywide system at 60 cents. That, that surprises me. And the other one that jumped right out at me was the, the, the feeling, the need that the county needs to come up with, with some sort of funding mechanisms to keep libraries open. So those two are the biggest things that jumped out at me.
Sure, and I think those all speak to the county's recognition of, of the importance of libraries and the value that they place on libraries. They don't want to see any of these cut down. They don't want access to these libraries reduced, and all of those findings kind of speak to that.
James, John Rasher here, I have one more question. On page 13, it, it talks about that people are willing to pay more taxes, and I'm wondering, the people in Ashland were included in this, does this mean, do you think this means they're willing to pay taxes above and beyond the extra taxes that they're paying now? Or do they think that the taxes they're paying now satisfy this?
Well, the way it's worded is saying, I'm, I'd be willing to pay more in taxes to support it. So because the question's worded that way, I think we have to assume that they would. And as I mentioned, so we have 65% support over the general sample here. Ashland was at 84% support total. So they're much more likely than any other area in the state to say that I'd be willing to pay more in taxes to support my libraries.
Well, yes, that was my question, if they were talking, if they think that the support they're paying is what they're already paying now, or it's above and beyond that.
It's hard to say, and the way the question was worded is, I would be willing to pay more. So I would assume that they would say more than I'm already paying.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Could you do me a favor and send Harvey, this is Commissioner Brydenfall, could you send Harvey a breakout of the, you mentioned that like 86 of the residents in Ashland were included into this process. Could you give me a breakout by community on how many people per community and what communities were involved in this?
Sure, so it was all Jackson County, and what we did was identified a few of the major areas here, we had Ashland that had 65 residents, Medford had 159 residents participate, Central Point had 40 residents, and then everybody else was kind of grouped into other, than other areas of the county. So that was 230, 236 people that went to this other category.
Thank you. Okay, does that do it? Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Bye. Thoughts? Opinions?
I'll give you my opinion.
Well, some I asked, plus. Unless I don't agree.
I, I love being chair. It'd be really good if I do that. Free for buzz. I'm encouraged by the results, needless to say. Whatever we decide, I told Danny this morning, I would like to keep the Ashland group in the loop, you know? We have an army of people that are willing to help down there, and I would like to tap into their resources, you know? And whatever decision we make is to get their feedback.
So I have a question, speaking specifically to that point, is with the Ashland groups, Catherine and her group. Does this survey, how was she picked? How would that group? Because I know that there, I, well, I know there was two things. One thing, they're very, very much opposed to and favor of, depends on how you ask the question, on whether or not it needs to be a special district or a service district. And absolutely, we're against services district. So that seems to be answered here. I don't have a problem with that. But the countywide, will they, do you think they'll get out and stump?
I just don't know. If they, they see these results, you know, I just don't know what they're going to say. That's why I think we need to keep them in the loop. They might say, good, let's go for the whole thing. Or they might say, well, we question this. I'd just like to hear their opinion.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
I'll disagree with that statement you just made on the service district versus special district. That was one comment that James made very clearly to us just a few minutes ago when I asked the question. And on that chart number four, and he basically just says, this is not a motivating reason if someone wouldn't support a district in general. So I, that's the guy that did the poll itself, doesn't believe that some.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm just telling you what she did mean, so.
So she.
You can disagree on what I want to.
He's not talking about what the service.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that.
No, she's not. No, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Can I give you guys a little, for you maybe make a decision?
Oh, sure, absolutely. That's what this is all about.
So we broke out for you guys the Measure Five gap and what amount would generate what amount of money. This is based on last year's assessment. This will actually be, it will be updated next week. One of the things I want to point out to you is we've talked about compression in the gap before. And if you're looking at 60 cents, countywide, there really isn't an issue, but based on last year's value, there's only 60, about 69 cents of tax left in town. So they're the ones that are on the cusp of, you know, hitting, reaching the limit under Measure Five. Now, I suspect that gap is going to grow because it's the Measure Five value or the, it's the real market value, the Measure Five value is computed on, and since real market values have been climbing this year, and Josh has said they've climbed significantly, then that's probably going to jump quite a bit. But based on last year, and the reason why that's important, is if you choose to do a district, it does still require each city to agree to opt in, even if you refer it. And that's a consideration that each city will have to make. If talent were not participate because of that gap, of course, that would reconstitute the district. Talent does have a surcharge that they pass, so they could potentially fund their portion of library services a different way outside of the district, right? They could contract with the district and pay with their surcharge. So there are ways for them, as the city that has the compression issue, and I can say compression issue even though it wouldn't put them into compression, citywide. Everywhere else, I mean, honestly, is well over a dollar thirty, all the way up to almost eight dollars in value. So there's not a problem anywhere else, and it's not a problem there, it just pushes them close.
Yeah, and it'll be interesting, you said we'll have that, a new data next week. So it'll be interesting to have for, if we roll this out, to show that, so.
Right, as soon as he certifies the roll, and we'll get you that update. But I can't, the other thing is, essentially, the 60 cents is roughly 57 dollars a year. Is that what it was, 57 dollars a year on that? So that's what it would cost people, based on the. So that's what it would cost people based on the value right now, $57 a year for the average, you know, the hundred and...
Hundred and seventy thousand.
Hundred and seventy thousand dollar appraised value, not real market value. A lot of people get confused on that. I think they pay on the real market. The measure five is computed on the real market, but the tax is on the maximum assessed value. So, and then...
So he's got two different numbers in the survey. So 60 cents, he had a hundred and two.
Okay. We'll need to read.
What was Harvey whispering about?
He's got two different numbers in the survey. So he has a hundred and two dollars per year on a hundred and seventy thousand dollar on. But we'll, I'll need to check it. The, if, if, I'm just giving you some...
No, that's good.
Because the numbers are going to change, right? So I'm giving you some general kind of philosophy to work from. And then we did compute the amount of tax by jurisdiction based on what rate you may consider if you wanted to consider. So it just tells, you know, essentially what each area would pay into the system for that. And I don't know if that's that urgent to you. I do want you to know regarding the South Valley conversation that you made, you know, it's going to be part of your overall conversation is a South Valley district cannot go forward in May. If you choose to do a countywide district, neither can go forward in May unless you refer it. There's not time for them to do signature getting initiative petition. So you wouldn't be in conflict with a South Valley district, even a South County district, even if they wanted to choose to proceed because they can't. There's not the time available to do that. If you choose to go in May for, let's say you choose the 60 cents or, you know, the 20 cents of the temporary portion, I mean, whatever you guys decide, we have enough time to do that, but we don't have a lot of time right yet. Because we would still essentially do all of the documentation that we would do. And there's really multiple steps to this because it would be a special district, assuming you go on the results of this, not necessarily affect what he said that may not influence. But this essentially says people want a special district with a governing body. Would it pass without that or not? Your research person said that wouldn't necessarily affect whether it passes or not. But the data says they want their own governing body. So it would require an election for the district, for funding the district, and then a separate election for the officers of the district. And that does require a lot of work on our part. The county would need to, or if you wanted to refer a levy, less work, doesn't require all the cities top in. And so those are kind of the two differences. The, not necessarily concern that I would have is regardless, you know, the way the budget worked essentially, at the end of this budget year, all libraries were to close except for Medford, right? In the next budget year. However, you understand our fund balance issue and creates an opportunity for you to fund this through at least a November election. So whatever you decide to do in May, if it weren't successful, you could still do something in November, not necessarily impact library services from how they're operated today. So still may give an opportunity for a South County district. It would also likely require, acquire your referral based on their request. When they came and asked you that, they said, we would only do this if you would refer it and if you would create a governing body that's separate from you. So I guess what I'm telling you is you can choose whatever amount of, or no amount. You can choose to proceed or not. But I don't think referring whatever you might want to do for an election in May will interrupt library services based on the change in circumstances. Now, that's something the budget committee has to agree to. I'm just giving you my opinion of what I would recommend when I'm putting the budget together. So I would recommend that we not reduce library services either because a May district passes or because it fails and you choose to do that, take a different opportunity, give voters a different opportunity in November. So at least to November, I think we could provide funding for the current service level. And you would have the option in May to do whatever you want. And if that were not successful, even based on what you have here that says it would be, then you would have the option to still do something in November and give people the opportunity. Maybe not a countywide opportunity, you might reduce it. Whatever you choose to do, we would hope that the South County would pass essentially what this says. And Kathy Shaw was right, and I pretty much assumed she was right about that part. I just didn't know about the whole rest of the county, and that's why I recommended to you, do a countywide survey. And I'm glad I did because this says actually there's...
It's more positive than I expected.
Yeah. And so she's right, though. You know, 88% of people down there would pass the district. And so I don't know if that changes whether you do it in May or November, you know, regardless of if you choose to try to do a countywide district or not. I think if you do try to choose to do a countywide district, at least you've given everyone the opportunity to have service, even if they end up voting up. So you can say we gave you the opportunity. If you choose not to do that, you didn't give them the opportunity and we'll cut the service. So that's the only bit of input that I have.
Okay.
Well, just one other, just one other thing that I don't think that we went over. Based on the current maximum assessed value, Jackson County's current value that we can apply that rate to, 20 cents per thousand raises about 3.2 million dollars. Remember, we need $5 million to operate under our current. 30 cents gets us 4.8 million. 40 cents gets us 6.4 million, up to six cent, or 60 cents, which gives us about 9.6 million, 9.7.
So it's one of the reasons why people said that, yeah, because they, they would, I would think, if I understood the survey correctly, is that they would enhance, they're willing to pay for it if they want. But they won't enhance, they wouldn't be willing to pay for it if we want to enhance the services.
Exactly. If we created a district, if we created a service district, or a special district, I guess, they were much more interested in supporting more service, better service than they currently have. Not interested in reducing the service.
And let me give you a rough idea of what that 60 cents would buy, just so you know what, what enhanced services mean. When we first entered into the contract with LSSI, we had a full price bid for that current service level, which is the service level that people wanted, but we couldn't afford them. So we negotiated a reduced cost with the reduced service level. The incremental difference from going from a reduced service level to the full service level countywide, without any of these other places opting in with additional revenue, at that time was 1.2 million. So essentially, that takes our budget of six plus million to 7.2 million in, at the time we first entered the contract. If you inflate it, you're going to be pushing close to this, you know, $9 million. But $9 million would buy full services as the county knew it before we reduced services or maybe more at a minimum.
And of course, if you elect a special district body, I mean, if we go in that direction, then it'd be up to them to decide how it is that they spend this permanent rate limit. I would hope that they would recognize that there was, you know, a target somewhat below that 60 cents that they could use initially because they're going to have to grow into it over time. Like I said, that'll be there soon.
They still have, they still have the 3% limit is what he's saying, and costs grow about 3%. So at some point, even if they have a margin, they're going to run up.
They're going to run up in rent. Counsel?
I'll sum comment briefly on the process. So the process that we go through, if the board chose to move forward with a special district, is virtually identical to the conversation and the process that we had relative to the formation of the agricultural extension district. And given the timeframes, that means the schedule that we set up for the extension district was that they had to have their city approvals by effectively Thanksgiving of this year in order for us to effectively process through in advance of the 90-day window that we need before the May 14, May 2014, I'm not sure what the date is, the May 2014 election. I think we could push that back maybe to mid-December. I haven't actually done the calculations in math. But it does still require the two hearings, and there have to be notices sent, and there are timeframes in between the two hearings. So we're probably looking at early December at the latest for the initial board hearing on the creation of a district. And at that hearing, you need to have all of the city consents in hand. So just, just a general look at the timeframes that will need to be honored in order to get something on the May 14, May 2014 ballot.
We, we would suspect, I mean, we have some interest from a group within the library to form a political action. And we suspect that they would carry that to the cities. I can't see them saying no. They wouldn't be willing to go ask the cities to pass a resolution. But so they would need to organize that. You do know, once you actually qualify for the ballot, then the county's out. We can't spend any resources in opposition or in support. And so really, it's going to, it's going to still need, I guess what I'm telling, this is for John. John was concerned about losing that community support from the South County group. No matter what you do, it's still going to need community support. So if they don't step up to help pass the resolutions with the cities and then carry the campaign, because the county won't, we can't. And so if they don't do that, then it's not going to happen.
John, you had a question.
Well, I did, and this just popped in my brain, so it's not valid. And Danny, you can think a lot faster. I can't. So what are the, what are the difficulties of, or the impossibilities of both measures were on the May ballot? Could you do either or? Is it possible to do that? Do a South County or a full County?
It's possible. I would not recommend it because they contradict each other. What happens if both of them pass? They're paying a double tax rate.
Well, that's what I said. Is there a way to eliminate that, either or? Okay. There's not? Okay.
Well, because, because only a portion, if, if they were, if they were two separate districts, yes. But you have, you would have one big district overlaying a smaller district. So you can't go either or because this one may pass in the South and this one may pass in the, in the North. And if you went either or, you would essentially be saying, we're going with the South and everybody who voted in the North is out of this thing, right?
And let me add, and a legal rule that I think is that you're actually not allowed to have two districts providing the same service.
Service, right. That's lost.
Yeah. And so I, I don't think it's...
They can provide the same service to different people because they're two different districts. So when they're inclusive of each other, you can't either.
Well, I figure there must be some reason.
I don't think you can.
Okay.
But you, you could do, you could do a South County and a North County. You could do that. But I wouldn't recommend you do that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. Because the South County in theory would carry the North County, you know, under a law.
For a countywide district, it's a larger portion of the North County would vote in favor. Although, I mean, I was shocked because he said he excluded that and it still passes countywide on the, on the levy portion. And he said it would have minimal impact. He said 3% on the countywide district if you remove Ashland. So it's not that big of an influence. And since there's a margin there at 4% anyways, it's not like it would still pass even without Ashland.
That's where you're going to get much of your soldiers, so.
Also, one of the nuances there is that he talked about Ashland only rather than South County as perhaps a larger voting group. So I think it might, it might influence a little bit more if you look at the South County as a voting block to support a countywide measure as well. But it's still fairly insignificant. You'd think it would be huge, but I think the population base elsewhere reduces that influence of the South County group countywide.
Okay. Further discussion? Well, I would say before we may make a recommendation on which way we're going to go, I would like to include the South County group, just get their take on it. They might say, if, if you guys are going to take this route, we're not interested in whatever. I can't imagine doing that, but I'd like to. But I mean, they want to, they put a lot of effort into this, so I'd just like to keep them in the loop.
Well, I, I do want to say something. If you isolate to the South County input, your library advisory committee's going to say, what about our input? And all of your friends' groups are going to say, what about our?
We can ask them.
Well, you can, except for we won't make the May election.
I just, I, I just can't imagine. That's your last question a little bit earlier about what that issue, but I don't want that, that, that group, any group, any single group driving.
Well, that's right. I don't want them driving, but I'd like to hear it.
I don't, absolutely. But then I feel pretty strongly about the countywide deal, so. But that's my own opinion. I don't care, you know, which group that is, so.
Well, I'm okay on the countywide deal, but, but I don't want to lose support down there. And I think it's worth, it's worth asking the question. And I can make that call this afternoon or somebody else.
Yeah, if I, if I can jump in, I was at, I was at the meeting and had discussions with Kathy and her group. And she, there were a couple of things that she really was adamant about. One was that it was a special dis, or I mean, yeah, a special district. And number two was that it was just that South County area. So I don't know if, and she wanted to draw those lines because she was sure that it could pass if we did those two things. We talked about, shortly about, you know, what happens if it was countywide? And she said, yeah, I don't, I don't think it passes, so I won't waste my energy doing it. But, you know, we wouldn't stand in your way. So I don't know if these numbers helped convince her that, you know, now there is a potential that it passes countywide, and so she'd still be able, be willing to do that. But I can't talk for her. I'm just saying what she's...
And, and the other thing, as Danny explained a little bit ago, that if we were to do, try the countywide thing, and goes down, they could still then in November try to do a South Valley thing.
I would hope it would, would work that way. She wouldn't say, I'm tired of that. That's what I want. I don't think that.
But I'd like you not, not want her dragging the bus necessarily. And I don't mean that anyway, except that I want to, I'd like to see us all working better.
We're going to need several weeks to prepare the information through council and administration. And then we're going to need several weeks to get the cities to buy. The extension district already had connections and they needed three months and they're still not even done. This is not going to move quickly. So, I mean, I'm fine with you, if, you know, if that's the way you want to go. But I'm telling you, like, next week, we, we, you know, if it's just a personal, if you're, if you're considering the South Cali, the county's opinion to be Kathy Shaw's opinion and all you're going to tell me is you're going to call Kathy Shaw, okay, I mean, that's fine. But I know, you know, and you heard this, that's why you held a public hearing is to take input from all of these groups of people and different people and various citizens, is they all, and I've been through this, they all, they're all going to want to weigh in on the decision you made. And that's fine if you want to do that. But that means we're not going to be able to make a decision by May to get on the mail about it. And so is it worth them? I think the main thing is they want library service. And I, I can't see any of the library-supported groups not agreeing that, especially because the county survey says it would pass, going back to the full service level and being supported. I mean, that's been asked for that for year after year. So they, they may not like everything you decide to do. Each, each of them may not like everything you decide to do. In fact, when we outsourced libraries, every single group didn't want to do it. Now, every single group supports it. So it's just a timing issue is all I'm concerned about. I, it's not whether you get the input or not, it's really a timing issue. And we're just...
Doug?
Opinions, comments? You know, I, I have, yeah. You know, I have concerns with two central districts being on the May ballot.
They can't be.
Not for the libraries.
Oh, yeah.
We're talking about the state of the county libraries itself.
And possibly historical.
Yeah, and possibly historical. So I think that's going to lend confusion to the voters.
The historical won't make a big difference.
I don't think the signature's happening there either. I don't see the signatures happening there either.
Not unless we refer it.
The, so I have concern on two being on the ballot at the same time, because that'll have an impact, in my opinion, on the voters.
I also have concern on the governance side, and this is where I really need to put some thought into it and how to receive forward from the governance. I know there's, the research says 25% or whatever we're looking at there, but I also understand that once a new board of directors would be created for this, if it were to go that direction, that LSI, the contracts, whatever we've done in the past, their counties done to be able to streamline, cut costs and do that, may not be the way of the future for that, that new district. And it could go to several different directions, and it would be at the whim of whatever that board would be doing. So, I really want to find out and answer some more questions on governance portion. That's why I...
What answers? What, I mean, I don't understand, what would be the questions?
I'd want to know, are we going to keep the libraries private or are we going to go back to public consolations in the libraries?
That could change with this governing body too, though. I mean, I don't mean to be, but, you know, okay.
You understand what I'm saying? In this governing body, I understand where we're at. With this governing body, I know where we're at, with a new governing body and how it will be put together, I couldn't answer those questions. So, there's a, I would want to know, I know with this governing body, I know that the costs would be very frugal, and a lot of crazy expenditure wouldn't be going into place, but it would be a very good program. That's not always the case with new boards as they go in because there's not always, I have the experience with fire district new boards, and I've seen what new board members with no experience do sometimes. They, they don't really understand the process, so I tend to shy away from that type of stuff because I've been in that world for too long. So, like I said, I have a few things I need to research before I come out and say whatever I need to say on that side of it. So, I'm really hesitant with turning over the governance over to a different group at this point in time.
Okay, John?
I don't have a problem turning the government over to them.
Can I comment on that? This may be helpful to you. Even though they're a separate district and they'll fund the operations, you still have influence because you still own the buildings, and you have to agree to let them use the buildings to be able to run libraries. And so, you have, you will have, you or whoever sits in your seats will have some influence on whether or not you agree to let them use your libraries for the kind of operations they want to run. So, I think that you don't give up all control because frankly, you own the, county owns the buildings now. At some point, the county may choose to not want to own the buildings. You may choose to sell them or transfer them or whatever to the district, but in terms of what your concern is, you have influence and control with it regardless of how the district's operations are governed.
Okay, do we, I can as a chairman make a motion, so is there any, is anything you want to do or, John, you've got, you want to talk to someone?
Well, all I want to do is...
Do you want us to try not more?
All I want is, yeah, all I want is to make sure all the troops are on the same side here. So, I just, it's a courtesy, and maybe I'm not the right person to do it, but I would like somebody to contact the South Valley group and tell them what our plans are. I would think that our plans would be that we would go for the full county, and if that doesn't fail, I mean, if that fails, which I don't think it will, then ask them if they're still interested in promoting the South County or supporting it. I'd like to get their support on both of them, primarily the first one. If they throw a monkey wrench into it and say, we're going to support it, we're going to campaign against it, then I think we need to talk it over. I mean, phone calls cheap.
I agree with that.